I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just ran into a red Camry from the library.
Oh, red Camry. Uh... We have... Wait, wait, wait. Come back.
There's officers here.
Um... There we go. Thank you.
Mayor Milton?
Here.
Council President Henderson?
Here.
Counselor Grant?
Here.
Counselor Folsom?
Here.
Counselor Butterfield?
Here.
Counselor Langer?
Here.
Counselor Clark?
Here.
Thank you.
We have two items on the consent agenda. The approval of the February 9, 2013 city council meeting minutes and the approval of the February 19, 2013 city council minutes.
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Spill.
Yes.
She couldn't hear you.
Well, tonight, we have the pleasure of having the TVFNR fire chief here to give us a presentation on the state of the district.
Thank you.
Button up.
Button is up.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Mike Dyke. I'm the fire chief at Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue. It's an honor to be here tonight just to give you an update as to what's going on with Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue as it relates to the city of Sherwood and the district at large. I might note I have Division Chief Alan Kennedy with me tonight and our Public Affairs Officer, Lisa Patimmo, in attendance with me. You know, on behalf of the fire district, it is an honor to serve Sherwood, and we had a great year in 2012. Wanted just to go over a few facts for you. Incidents in Sherwood within the city limits for 2012 were 1,085. Primarily, and this won't come as a surprise, most of the responses we have are emergency medical in nature. 864 of those 1,000 were, followed up by fires and public assists. It's a... Those call types aggregate a large number of variety, everything from a gas leak, wires down, small fuel spills, things like that. You know, related to emergency medical, district-wide, Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue does run almost 33,000 incidents in our entire 210 square miles, which accounts for about 82% of our calls being medical. Within the city of Sherwood, though, we had about 80% medical, so it must be that the citizens are a little bit healthier within Sherwood, so we do appreciate that. We are blessed to have a paramedic on every single vehicle, at least one, and many of our units have multiple paramedics. They all have EMTs and paramedics staffed on those vehicles, which allow us to provide an extremely high level of care to the citizens. It actually... Because we have paramedics and a large number of very highly qualified pieces of equipment, the cardiac medications, all the different devices, actually allow us to bring the emergency room to someone's living room. And we work very closely with area hospitals to make sure that we have the highest level of definitive care that frankly the industry has to offer. So... And that work is some of the best work that we do in the community. Just to... We do collect a lot of data on the incidents we respond, and it is interesting when you stratify the incidences to what types of things happen to people throughout the different age groups. You will note that we all tend to fall a little bit more as we get older, but the good thing is, is as we get older, we have a lower likelihood of cardiac chest pain and breathing problems. But you can see, just based on the age groups, where these things tend to happen, and that allows us to focus on a number of campaigns that allow us to, you know, get information to the elderly on how to help prevent falls from happening, how to fall-proof your home, and to make sure that you don't have these things happen to you based on the age that you are. And it allows us to create some community risk reduction throughout our service area. You know, healthcare is a common topic, not just within TVFNR, but frankly across the country. And 911 services and 911 response are a growing healthcare and social service safety net. We find ourselves, and we always have felt, we are a component of the healthcare system. We're not just emergency medical, but we are an active component of someone's healthcare in many ways. When something happens and individuals don't know what to do, they call 911, and then we help them through the process, treat them, and/or get them the definitive level of care that they need. Because we feel we're part of the healthcare system, we are actively participating in healthcare reform. Again, you're hearing this discussed quite a bit nationally. There's Governor Kitzopper is extremely involved with Oregon, and TVFNR is working through the process to make sure that all of our citizens are in the forefront of getting whatever ends up coming out of that process, but what we hope is better health, better care, and lower costs, which is the triple aim that you may have heard being discussed. And we're working through the process to offer the services that Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue already provides, to hopefully do what is intended, and that's lower everyone's healthcare costs. Make sure the systems... The system is as efficient as possible, because we ultimately know that's when we're going to actually reduce the premiums that everyone pays and provide a better level of care, all while trying to get to the public as quickly as possible. Another way Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue tries to be extremely efficient with the resources that were provided is by augmenting our fire engines and fire trucks throughout our service area with a variety of different resources. You may have seen our cars that we have deployed throughout our service area since 2010. That program has been extremely successful. We only have four cars that work on a peak staffing model, just 40 hours a week, but we focus them on the busiest times on our incident load, and that has dramatically assisted us in making sure that we have the right resources available when someone needs them. Our engines and trucks are still our primary response resource, though because we have the cars, it allows us to focus those during those peak staffing times on the lower acuity calls. So the calls that don't need four people to show up in an engine and truck during those times of day, we deploy the car and make sure that the engines and the trucks are available for those calls when they happen. It is also somewhat interesting that Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue is one of the first fire departments in the nation to deploy a resource model like this, and I will just say, it's catching on. We're getting a lot of inquiries across the country as ways to be more fiscally responsible in communities and provide a higher level of care, where so many other departments across the country in this economic downturn have cut back on the services they provide. We actually increased the services we provided through a more efficient model. We also are... Want to be a good partner in safer communities, and we've done a lot of infrastructure updates ever since 2006. Our capital bond program, which the voters approved, provided $77.5 million for us to update fire stations and buy updated apparatus. Sherwood's fire station was one of the first that we conducted a substantial remodel on in that program, and we are working through the process of doing several updates and/or reconstructions of fire stations. Another fire station that serves Sherwood, our King City Station on 99W, is slated for a complete reconstruction in the next phase of our process. You'll see some construction happening at that fire station or a nearby location as soon as we work through the process on that. But it's provided the ability for us to build essential... Fire stations that are built to an essential standard, so even if we have a significant seismic event, those fire stations will still be functional and be able to respond to the community and provide the services that they'll need, but we hope that doesn't happen for several hundred, if not ever, years, if not ever. So... Another way we partner for safer communities is providing inspections in those buildings that we work, play, and pray. We want to make sure those structures are safe, and those are the facilities and structures that we're allowed to statutorily come in and inspect. Obviously, we don't come into people's homes and inspect them, but those buildings that we're allowed to, we conduct inspections on, and we did 120 within the city last year. We did investigate 16 fires within the city also during that calendar year. And that... Whether we're talking about inspections or investigating fires, the city's always been a great partner that when we see things that could be potential problems in other buildings in the future, the city and the building department works to make sure that we change our practices or procedures to try to prevent those other incidents from happening, and we're very proud of the partnership we have there. Another thing that we're extremely fond of is trying to get out into the community and talk about emergency preparedness and prevention activities. In 2012, we conducted approximately 735 community events across our service area, which interacted with over 60,000 citizens. Within the city specifically, we have two very popular events that are somewhat the highlight of all of the events that we have within TVFNR. The Community Service Fair that's been going for many, many years in 2012 had over 800 people come through just right at the fire station, and then we had the Santa rides in 2012, and we had 700 people show up for that. So that was a great event, and it was great to see the kids so excited about Christmas. Also, we provide a lot of fire and life safety information. For many years, we've presented our nationally award-winning apartment manager and landlord program. Interesting to note that of the 15 apartment complexes in Sherwood, we've had 11 of the apartment managers from those complexes attend it, and we're working on picking up just the final few that are left. There is... I believe it's a 98... Those apartment landlords that attend that program have a 98% chance of never having a significant fire in their complex, and if you've been around for a few years or a few decades, actually, we had a significant problem of fires in apartment complexes, and this program solved that problem for us. So it's one that we conduct four times a year out at our training center here in Sherwood, and it's a great partnership to put our own little fire marshal within these complexes to help prevent incidents from happening. We also conduct... We conduct at area high schools a SKID program, which is a simulation of a significant traffic accident usually tied to some sort of impaired drunk driver or some sort of impaired driver during a high school assembly. We are scheduled to present one of those on April 17 at Sherwood High School, so I believe if you'd like to view that, we'll make that available, that you could be a spectator and watch that event. It's a significantly impactful event, not just on the kids, but anyone that does watch one of those, and they've been extremely successful. We work with also adult foster care providers, and we have a very well-established youth fire center intervention program, which we can prove through data does work and keep youths from using... misusing fire if they do have a curiosity or some sort of a problem. One thing that we're extremely proud of in the fire district, we became one of only about a dozen fire departments in the nation to roll out a smartphone app called Pulse Point, and you may have seen this in the media recently, but what it is, is an app you download on your smartphone, and it doesn't matter if you have an Android or an iPhone or a BlackBerry. And it... Once you know how to do hands-only CPR, if you're within an eighth of a mile of a cardiac arrest event, it will notify you based at the same time that our units are notified. The servers... The servers will... When we push to dispatch the fire station or the fire apparatus, we'll also notify any Pulse Point-enabled phone within that service area or that amoeba of that call, and our physician supervisor has shown us and proven through an incredible amount of data that we will see a much higher level of cardiac survivability with bystander CPR. So TVFNR has been very active in trying to get the community to embrace learning hands-only CPR, which is very simple. Put your hands in the center of the chest, push hard and fast until an emergency service worker arrives. We also have a very... We have a wonderful relationship with Sherwood PD where they already respond and provide CPR, and they have eight automatic external defibrillators in their vehicles, and we have a number of saves that we've had within the city because of that great partnership. But if you haven't had a chance to download Pulse Point, please do, and if you don't know how to do CPR, we will show you, and it only takes about 20 minutes if you don't know how to do it. It's very simple to learn, and we're also working with the local middle schools. It's interesting to note that the best instructors for hands-only CPR are eighth graders, and we've been working with area middle schoolers, Sherwood included, to teach those eighth graders how to do hands-only CPR, and then they go and train their families, friends, neighbors, and it's been an incredible program. One middle school up in Beaverton Valley Catholic trained 75 eighth graders how to do hands-only CPR and challenged them to train as many people as you could, and just this week, we had a celebration of 1,000 people they trained. They've done that two years in a row. So it's incredible what a community can do when they get behind something, and Sherwood's no different than the other communities like the Valley Catholic community. We've seen some great things that have been accomplished. So I just wanted to plug the app. You know, TVFNR, we do strive to provide an extremely high level of emergency response. We also know that we need to do community fire and life safety education throughout the service area. We're very fortunate to have such great interaction with the city on talking about those complex issues such as transportation and community planning. Our ability to respond in a quick fashion is incumbent on a great transportation network, and the city's always been great in working with us to talk about ways that you can assist us in getting to where we need to get in an expeditious fashion. The street networks that you've opened up recently have helped tremendously, and then we always try to be financially prudent and responsible with the resources entrusted us. So I just wanted to give a quick overview over some things happening within the fire district, and with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
I don't actually have any questions, but I can take this chance to publicly thank your inspector, because last fall, when we were doing a musical where we expected a very large audience in the Sherwood Middle School Gymnasium, it was challenging because we had 63 children and a very small stage space, so we had to create stage space on the floor, and she was so great, helped us know where we could put our wings so that people could still see the exits, and, you know, when you were there at the show, you were really glad, because there were a lot of people there, and you were just really glad that somebody who knew what she was doing helped us, and she was so gracious and kind, and I appreciated her coming by at, you know, 8 o'clock one morning to do that for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
For one, I want to thank you for coming. I've lived here about 18, 19 years, and I've never heard a bad word about your department. It's always been great, and so I, for one, am happy to live here, knowing that we have this type of fire department here, and as I get up into the age where it's the falling is a big issue...
Actually, tapered off there.
Yeah. Yeah. So, no, I just... It's just another one of the things that makes our community so great, to have such a great department.
Well, thank you very much.
I just have one comment. I think the other thing that is not lost on any of us and a lot of people in this community is the unique relationship that our police department has with the district that services our community, and I'm sure that those partnerships are many within the district, but I'd like to think that ours is special in that we have a great group of people who have nothing to say but wonderful things about both sides of the organizations that service us, so...
Yeah. I would say, actually, the relationship that I have with the chief and Sherwood PD is fairly unique. The chief has always been one to come to me to ask, what else can we do to help the community be more successful, safer, and frankly, create a model for the rest of the region on what has worked. Sherwood was one of the first to embrace wanting to respond on cardiac arrests and do CPR and put AEDs in their car, and it was frankly, it was something that I could tell the other cities we serve that, hey, Sherwood's doing it, and that has really been tremendous for us to have such a great partnership with law enforcement here in Sherwood and the chief, and it's been something that's really opened a lot of doors, and frankly, I'm excited because I don't think we're done yet in what we can accomplish to make the community a better place to live.
The other comment I would have is that if counsel has not had an opportunity to do a ride-along, I really encourage you to do one night. It's not necessarily the same type of ride-along as riding with the police department, but it's certainly enlightening, and you get a chance to spend some time with the men and women who serve our community, and otherwise, you wouldn't really be able to do that except maybe at the Community Services Fair or we did last night when our Cub Scout group was at Station 33 for the Readyman Badge, and we had all four officers or four members of the fire department came in and worked with the boys until they left and had to go to a medical call.
Yeah.
So...
Thank you.
Appreciate your service and appreciate the use of the community's room that we have. It's utilized frequently and often by many, many different groups who have all different, you know, charters, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from counsel? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No Eagle Scout. No Eagle Scout.
No, he didn't show up tonight. And I'm gonna... I'm gonna move citizen comments to the last, and we're gonna go on new business first. Resolution 213-009 authorizing the city manager to sign a leasing agreement with Auto Leasing Specialists for the leasing of police vehicles. Captain Daniel.
Mr. Mayor, Attorney Counsel. So Sherwood is seeking to continue leasing police vehicles?
Thought I had it. Guess I didn't. Sorry. Mr. Mayor and counsel, the city of Sherwood is seeking to continue leasing police vehicles from an established vendor who we currently have a lease for police vehicles through, which is Wireworks located in Salem. They're an outfitter of vehicles to create things that come off the factory line into actually police cars, and this is through the State of Oregon bid. The financing arm of this vendor is Auto Leasing Specialists, and authority to sign previous leases was provided to both city manager Jim Patterson and city manager Pro Tem Tom Pesamere. The same authority needs to be granted to Mr. Joseph Gall, our current city manager, so he can sign new lease agreements. A little bit of background about this, basically, it's in keeping with the city council goal of fiscal responsibility in an effort to save upfront budgeting costs. Police staff has looked at several various options of procuring police vehicles, including leasing them from Auto Leasing Specialists. Signing the lease agreement would allow staff to continue the practice of procuring police vehicles from Auto Leasing Specialists on a lease to own program. Basically, we pay a certain amount of lease cost every year for a period of, for example, four years, and at the end of that lease, we pay $1 for the car and it becomes ours. The leasing agreement has been reviewed and approved by legal staff, and this lease option does fit within our current budgeted allowances. Staff respectfully requests adoption of this resolution.
Questions from the counsel? Counselor Butterfield?
How many vehicles?
This is for two vehicles, sir.
Two vehicles?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What's the cost of a vehicle fully equipped?
For these two vehicles fully equipped, the total amount financed is $83,733. So basically, without digging through all my paperwork to look at the exact cost of these vehicles by themselves, it's right around $37,000 to $40,000 each vehicle fully outfitted, and I will say that we did recycle a variety of police equipment, which I took down for the building and creation of these cars in order to save us some money. One of those items would be a light bar, which usually costs about $1,500, light controllers, which are probably about $350 to $500 each, and of course, all of our radio equipment, that type of thing, has been recycled from other vehicles into these new vehicles.
How many miles do you normally put on them, and then you go into replacement, and then you eliminate the other car when you bring in a new one on normally?
That's correct. Several years ago, we sat down with Darren Can Peroli and folks from Public Works, particularly since we hired our own mechanic, who has assured us that we could get our vehicles to 120,000 miles as opposed to the norm, which is somewhere between 80 and 100,000 miles. So we're pushing our cars a little bit longer. We're trying to keep care of them a little bit better, but we do have some cars that are approaching 120,000 that need to be replaced.
What do you do with those vehicles after you buy them?
Well, presumably, at the end of the lease, when we buy them for a dollar, they'll still have low enough miles on them that we will continue having them in our fleet for several years until they reach 120,000 miles, and then at that time, we'll take them off the road, we'll decommission them, remove all the police equipment, and then probably send them to the state auction.
Okay. How many vehicles do we have now? Do you know? Just a rough guess.
Marked cars? I think we have nine marked cars.
Any other...
Are these vehicles the marked or the unmarked?
One will be unmarked, the other one will be fully marked.
And how many unmarked do we have?
We'll have six unmarked cars, one of those which is really overdue to go away.
So that'll be six, six unmarked and nine marked?
I believe that's correct, but I'm just going off the top of my head. I don't have my list here in front of me. It's been hard to keep track sometimes.
If I may, Mayor, counsel, there might be some confusion between patrol vehicles and investigative vehicles or other service cars. So when you say unmarked, I think those cars are getting added into that number. We only will have... The unmarked car now will only be the second unmarked car. The other one is... Needs to go in terms of patrol cars. So we don't operate it... Generally speaking, we don't operate unmarked patrol cars. We'll have this one, and when it needs to go into patrol, it'll get marked if we need to do that, but... So I just wanted to make that distinction. We have other vehicles that are not patrol cars that our investigators drive and we use for surveillance, different things or whatever, so...
Any other questions? I just have one more. How many are take-home vehicles?
That will bring us to four total out of the fleet, I think. That's correct, four, and that includes one motorcycle.
I move we adopt Resolution 2013-009.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next resolution we have is 2013-010 establishing the decision-making structure and appointing a local trail advisory committee for the Cedar Creek Trail. Planner Michelle Mitchell Miller, sorry, different name, they're close.
That's okay. I'll answer to both, I suppose. So, good evening, counsel. Last fall, the city of Sherwood... So I just wanted to make that distinction. We have other vehicles that are not patrol cars that our investigators drive and we use for surveillance, different things or whatever, so.
Any other questions? I just have one more. How many are take-home vehicles?
That will bring us to four total out of the fleet, I think. That's correct, four. And that includes one motorcycle.
Any other questions from council?
I move we adopt Resolution 2013-009.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next resolution we have is 2013-010 establishing the decision-making structure and appointing a local trail advisory committee for the Cedar Creek Trail. Planner Michelle Mitchell Miller, sorry, different name, they're close.
That's okay. I'll answer to both, I suppose. So, good evening, Council. Last fall, the City of Sherwood received a $5.7 million grant for design and construction of the Cedar Creek Trail, which is roughly a 2.6 mile trail through the center of Sherwood, through the Cedar Creek Greenway Corridor, running north and south. And as we have been briefing the council over the past year, it's been determined that the Parks Board would be served as the primary advisory board for the project. And this resolution before you tonight formalizes that decision-making structure. Two subcommittees will be formed out of that, for the decision-making structure, one being a technical advisory committee and another being the local, what we're calling the Local Trail Advisory Committee. And that is comprised of the neighbor, various neighbors and citizens that reside within the Cedar Creek Greenway Corridor to really get their input on the project, to address their issues and concerns, and to also help inform the Parks Board of the concerns of the various neighbors involved with the project. So what you have before you are the recommendations from the Parks Board. To back up a little bit, back in the past few months, we've been working on who would be members of that committee. In December, we sent out postcards for an informational kickoff meeting to generate interest in the project and let the neighbors know that, a little bit about the background for the project. Interested members who wanted to serve on the committee were asked to fill out a questionnaire, and we got, we received about eight responses of those interested in serving on the committee. We took that information back to the Parks Board and really wanted to hear more from the other side of the, other side of the Greenway Corridor. So we sent out another letter and trying to get some more neighbors involved in that, from that side of the Creek Corridor. So the names for you are a good representation of the various neighborhoods and sides of the Creek Corridor to help inform the decision-making.
Council comments?
Taking any questions?
I just want to thank you. You've really kept us abreast of this trail project because I think this is the third or fourth time we've been discussing it, and it's really good. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
No council discussion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-010.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our third resolution is 2013-011 authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Sherwood, the City of Wilsonville regarding cost, construction, ownership and operation of waterline segment 3B. Public Works Director Craig Sheldon.
Good evening. This is the last segment of pipe, water transmission pipe from Wilsonville to Sherwood. The difference here is we're upfronting the cost of the project with Wilsonville paying us back their share in the end. We'll have 50% ownership in this segment, as we do in the other segments. And there'll be a true-up at the end. There's some work that's gotta go on in Wilsonville's distribution system. So in the end, it'll be 53, 53.8% of the total cost will be Wilsonville's cost, with ours being 46.2. They also have 180 days after substantial completion to pay Sherwood back their share of the project. So we're asking for 3.4, 3.497 plus a 5% contingency, 3.497 million dollars plus 5% contingency for a total of $3,671,850 for the project. Hopefully, it'll come in lower than that. We're going off the estimates we have at this time, planning on construction late July, early August. So it's going through a wetland area, so the cost is a little bit higher. There was a question on that, and I feel pretty comfortable that we'll come in under this number. We have $4 million in our budget for this project.
Council comments, questions?
I just want to make sure our attorneys have reviewed this contract and feel comfortable that the city is well represented.
I have. We were involved in the drafting and I think it's ready to go.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Call for a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-11.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That completes our new business. I'd like to have citizen comments. If anybody has citizen comments, to please come forward tonight.
I don't know if I'm supposed to do citizen comment or not.
Go ahead. Please give your name and address when you start.
Sure, Jeff Roberts, 21705 Southwest Wheat Place, Sherwood, Oregon, 97140. I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly how to do this. I'm following up on a request I made about a month ago to the city council regarding a reduction of a fee on setbacks. It's a Class A variance. And I submitted several documents to the city recorder. I don't know, did you get the last one that I sent over tonight, too?
I did, Jeff. Currently, council has in front of you the documents of the, prior documents Mr. Roberts submitted at the prior meeting, the document received this afternoon, late afternoon, which is, I believe, the Wilsonville code. And then the document provided by staff, which is a staff recommendation. So you should have three documents in front of you.
So in my documents that I submitted, I wanted to discuss a reduction of the fee in minimal, in instances where there's a minimum impact. And in that I provided the adjacent, some of the adjacent cities and their fees. I've been waiting on Wilsonville to get back to me. They have, so in the process, I've learned a lot. And what I feel is a burden or is concern on my side is, our city has the three options. You have a variance to do a reduction of, I guess, I think the process is too broad. And what I'm asking for is when there are minimum impacts, such as in this case, there is one neighbor that's being affected, who submitted their written letter supporting the waiver and the, or the reduction and the setback, that we should have a process here that is more flexible and is not a burden on the community. And on its, on people that it's not affecting to that point. Case in point is Wilsonville side, this is what I submitted later. Rather than going through an entire variance process for a setback, and I have extra copies if you need them, Wilsonville has what's called a reduced setback agreement. And if you read through that, the gist of it is when two neighbors agree to a setback, they can fill out a simple form, reduce setback agreement. They have to get that signed by both and recorded. And then they do a simple, filling out of a form, basically is the email from the associate planner there, and there's a fee of $160. This seems much more reasonable than $4,410, which is required to do the same thing in the City of Sherwood. I understand the process. I work in real estate. I understand that there's processes there for reasons. At the same time, there are, the process has to fit the request. And in this case, as well as from what staff had told me, over the last 12 years, there's only been 10. In fact, the city manager made my point for me by saying that there were only eight Class A variance requests in the last 10 years. If there's only eight, and if they are so small in impact, as in this case, then there should be a process to at least hear those people out and to reduce fees, waive fees, or something to that effect. And so rather than just asking for my family and I to say, hey, we would appreciate a reduce, reduction on this, in this case, I'm trying to help fix what I see as a problem. And so that's why at the bottom of my request, first, I'm asking for the reduction in this instance, from the 4410 down to the 260, which is the cost to do the mailings. I will pay that, and we will go through the process of notifying neighbors, go through the hearing. So we're keeping that. In the meantime, we're requesting that there's code language. Perhaps you just take a page out of Wilsonville's book, cut and paste. They've got basically a page here of codes saying, in the case of something as small as a setback, where it's two neighbors, they're all on the same page, let's streamline this. Let's think a little bit out of the box, and let's not tie up city time, council time, planning commission time, and let's not burden the citizens paying taxes and voting and everything else. And let's keep it as streamlined as possible. In the case of larger variances, great, I get that, and I support that. Small things like this, I do not support. I also wanted to address some of the fees, the, in mine, I'm drawing out the adjacent, adjacent jurisdictions. The city managers is talking about some of the other ones. Gresham, I wouldn't call that adjacent. That's about the farthest city in MoMA County. Beaverton is still half the cost. Cornelius, which is way out there, Washington County, half the cost. But when you compare local here, Newburgh, Tiger, Twolton, and Wilsonville, you can see that, I feel like I have a point here. And I feel like this is a great way for the city council, for the city, to address something that maybe is people, it's a burden for people to, what's the term I'm looking for? If, it becomes a what?
A barrier.
A barrier, thank you. A barrier for eight people in 10 years to, from the grassroots, say, hey, I just want to build a house for my family, and I want to have as big a backyard as possible. And the only person I'm affecting is on board with it. And I feel like it's reasonable, and that's up to you to decide. But I'm not only trying to ask for just a waiver in this instance, but to try to help fix the problem. I'm happy to help. If you want some input, I'm happy to help. I have limited time, just like you do, but if this is something where I can help, I'm happy to help. And that's about it. I'm open for questions or comments.
First thing I need to tell you is we don't make decisions on consent items, so we will have to review this. But I appreciate what you've come forward and talked to us about, and we will be getting back to you, I guarantee that, and in a timely manner. But I've just started looking at some of these items, and I wanted to take more time to review it.
And I know you're getting started, so I don't want, I'm sure you've got a big stack on your desk.
Council comments?
I guess I just have a question about the process of getting back to the citizen. How's that gonna go? How do we get together as a group and review this? Yeah, because I feel like I can't process everything right here, including the staff memo and everything. How does that go?
Would it be acceptable for us in our meetings with you on Mondays to discuss this?
Sure, you can certainly give me your input in our individual meetings that we have. I think staff is probably looking for some direction. We've got a variety of issues. I mean, you've got the fee waiver, which you'll see in the memo, the code isn't really very definitive in terms of criteria, but it's clear that the council is the authority to waive or reduce fees. You have a recommendation from staff based on the analysis and the memo, but really, the burden is on you to weigh whether or not it's a valid example to reduce or waive a fee. So that's one issue. I think another issue that came up late is this Wilsonville code, which is very interesting. I've never seen that before, and I mentioned it to Julia this afternoon, and she had not been familiar with it. I don't know how it's worked, how long it's been there, what the problems, there's always unexpected consequences. But it seems like, you know, they passed it, and we'd like to have some time to actually explore it, if the council thinks that's a direction you're interested in. I mean, one of our neighbors has code language that seems to address this issue. We would need some time to kind of work with legal counsel and with our staff, and to talk to our friends in Wilsonville and find out a little bit more. It's a unique approach. Like I said, I've not seen that. So if you give us some direction, we can schedule this as an item on your next agenda, which gives you more time. I know Mr. Roberts has been very patient. This is not something you deal with all the time, so I think you do want to take your time and weigh all the pros and cons. But we can talk individually in my meetings, we can have this on your next council agenda. If you want us to explore the Wilsonville code language a little bit more, I would appreciate, I think staff would appreciate that clear direction tonight. If you're not interested in that, then we're not gonna waste our time and energy exploring something that you really don't seem interested in as a policymaking board, so.
Well, I-
Does that help at all?
I for one, agree with what you just said, Joe. I would like to see you guys look into it, especially if Wilsonville has something that's similar or something that could make sense. I would like things to be open and easy, and the more code that we can clean up as we get through this thing, the better off we are.
Then we'll go ahead and we'll meet with you on our individual meetings next week, and we can, you'll know our direction-
Yes.
-after that, and you're gonna, I would like to explore the Wilsonville also.
And we'd like to see if there are other cities in the region that have that code language. I mean, if you look at code language, and you probably see this in your business, there's a lot of consistency city to city. I mean, you don't start from scratch when you're creating code. You find code language that works somewhere else, and you analyze it, and if it works and it makes sense for your community, you tend to adopt similar language. So we're not recreating the wheel, and you know, in all honesty, I appreciate your diligence in finding this. This may be a solution. It may not be. The only question I have is your timing, because you've mentioned, it's been a month since you brought this to us. Is there urgency in terms of the property acquisition? I mean, where you are-
Yeah, we have to decide by tomorrow, basically, if we're gonna move forward with the lot. And at this point, we're planning on, just because I've already got my kids over the hump, they're all past crying about staying in their, in their home, and it's the, okay, what would you do in the, in the new house? And our homes are not gonna be as big as, our home is not gonna be as big as the other ones on this, in this partition. And we want a backyard. We've got, right now, a small back, a small yard, a small house and a bigger backyard, which is not very common in suburbia Sherwood. And we want to keep the backyard as big as possible. So we're just looking for the usable space. And unfortunately, the code doesn't address if you are on a corner, it doesn't say if your house is, if the front of the house is here, then the code, and this is like in a lot of jurisdictions, not all of them. But if there's a, if you're doing your garage in a different direction than the front of the house, it doesn't allow you to do a setback to make, so if you look at the picture, the front of the house would face sunset, what I'd like to do is make the garage, which is detached, or which is like an ADU garage, to make that face the private drive. Well, in that case, I could do a five-yard setback for the side yard of the garage and keep the same side yard setback for the front of the house. It makes total sense, and I understand why the code says it, but there isn't a provision there saying, in certain circumstances, or an asterisk saying, if there's a certain case where you can't get on your lot, like in this case, where I've got slope and slope, and I've got a little window to get on, to get into my lot just to get to the garage, if I have to shove that up 20 feet because it's the automatic setback, or if the variance is only $50 for two feet, or $1,100 for four feet, you can see how there's kind of a gap in our code. And it's a burden. And it's a burden. And if there's something to, to fix that, great, but it's just, it just seems too much for, for using the extra ten feet or fifteen feet. I'd be happy with ten feet, but the extra, the feet that I already have to buy and pay taxes on, everything else, and then what do I do with that after I've got twenty feet beside, between my garage and the next property? I'd rather shift the garage over, it only affects one person, and use the yard for my kids and dog, and again, the cat is still on the table. If you want the cat, it's yours. It'd make me happy.
So, Mayor and Council, I want to make sure, I'd like to ask Chris Cream if he's got any words of wisdom before we go down this path, and then Julia Hiduk as well, because if, if we do end up with code language changes, there is a process to do that. You have to go through the planning commission and all that, so it, I mean, Mr. Roberts' government doesn't move as quickly as everyone likes, and I don't want to mislead you that if we decide to go down that path, that it's just a one-night kind of thing. There's a whole process and everything.
No, I'm a big boy, I understand it.
Yep. So, Chris, go ahead.
Well, that's exactly right. If you want to do a text amendment to your code, there's, it's a legislative land use decision, has to go through the legislative process, set out your code. The, but I also, you know, I'm cognizant of the recommendation in the staff report that you may want to undertake a broader fee study, because it's been some time, I guess, since that was done. So, there are really two questions, I think staff is looking for direction on, do you want us to investigate the advisability of a text amendment and what that would look like? And then, secondly, do you want folks to take on a review of the fee structure, which I guess I'll leave to Julia to explain further, but I think that's a fairly big task.
Yes, it would be a fairly big task. And, and actually, I was just talking with someone this afternoon, and kind of asked about the scope of what a fee study might entail, and they said, well, depending on the size and the complexity, anywhere between twenty thousand and sixty thousand dollars, obviously, we need to explore that, and hopefully not do that much. But it's involved, because you're really looking at, you know, the hours involved, you know, the average hours, and then the philosophy of, and I don't, I haven't explored with all of the different jurisdictions, but some cities have a philosophy of, we're going to have sixty-five percent cost recovery through fees, and that may be why the fees are different, and that's ultimately a council decision on what your philosophy on fees are. It may be that our fees are higher specifically because we're doing a hundred percent, and maybe other jurisdictions aren't, and then that's something that the council would need to weigh, how they want to handle that. So, yeah, certainly, a fee study is a question, whether or not we want to explore the possibility of a code amendment is a question. I think ultimately, Mr. Roberts' question is whether or not you are willing to grant a waiver-
Just a reduction.
A reduction or a waiver to a fee-
Yeah.
-that is established, and pays for a process that is established. And so, it's not, you know, you wouldn't be able to modify the process. If council were to waive that fee, there'd still be an application submitted, and we would still be spending time and resources on that application, so.
Can I ask Julia a question?
Sure.
In this case, when it's something small like this, when it's a setback, your hours change regarding on the-
Not necessarily, and the process is the process. We still have to do the notice, we still have to send out agency comments, we still do the same mailing, we still do the same level of review, the same level of analysis. So, you know, and, and it's a seventy-five percent reduction, so it may seem small, but the reduction that is being asked for is still quite a bit. So, the pri, the process is still the same.
I'd go fifty percent, if that helps.
Because you still have to do the review, you still have to make the findings, it still goes with the planning commission, there's still that process, so.
Now, do we have the option on virtually any project, reducing the fees if, during downtimes in economy, but leave them where they're at, so if the economy comes back up?
The council certainly has the authority to set the fees and to waive the fees. And so, yeah, that is certainly a conversation that the council would have. Obviously, it comes with ramifications, because our budgets assume certain revenue. So, if, if the council mid-budget cycle decided to waive or reduce fees, then there'd be a, you know, Craig might want to join in, there'll obviously be an economic consequence to the city.
That's assuming we want to be a fee-based city, and if we want to continue on that fee base.
Financial considerations aside, waiving fees or reducing fees on a case-by-case basis raises possible legal concerns. Without any standards for the exercise of that discretion, you start to make what to, and an outside observer may look like arbitrary decisions, decisions that we, granting favors in favor of one citizen and not another, you start raising equal protection concerns. So, I'm much more comfortable if the city has set standards or a step, established process that you follow and apply to every citizen, rather than granting waivers or reductions on a case-by-case basis.
So, we could go and just look at our fee structure again and make modifications to certain fees?
You can change any fee or all fees, but it should be done to the structure and then applied uniformly to everybody who seeks that application.
Correct.
So, the fee schedule that we have in place is not arbitrary, correct?
That is certainly my understanding. It was set when I started here and there, you know, up until two thousand and eight, we increased it by a certain percentage-
Right.
...to cover the costs, you know.
It is, it is not arbitrary. It is all tied together. The fees relate to the costs of providing the services.
Right, to the scope of the work.
Right. So, reducing the fees means that some other source of revenue has to be used to pay for the, for the, for the service provided.
Right. And so, the cost of doing a fee schedule review is five figures, or in, I guess in your quote, it was six figures, is because you have to take a look at what Jennifer, it's sort of like doing what would essentially be cost accounting, correct? You're going to go down and you're going to analyze how long it takes to process a text amendment, or a waiver, or whatever it is we're dealing with, code. And so, while it may seem like an exorbitant amount, twenty or thirty thousand, what you would hope we would do is we would, we would review every fee, not just arbitrary fees or residential fees, or, you know, fire alarm fees. And so, that's why I think that scope of work is a lot greater than most people would realize, so.
One of the things, and I think it's been eight years since we've done it?
Yeah, well, at least.
At least? So, I think there is a-
With exception of STCs.
Yep.
It's been over six.
You know, I've been here nine months, but I, you know, I've heard from a number of people, you've seen two people approach you for refunds, thinking your fees are too high. I've heard people on council and the mayor talk about barriers to developments. I think, I think this is a good time to really explore that idea, and it's probably long overdue to take a look at our fee schedule and see, you know, and it raises policy questions. Are we going to be a hundred percent, or are we going to do seventy-five percent, and, you know, where's the other twenty-five percent going to come? So, it's, it's a, it's an important question, but it needs to be asked correctly and thoroughly.
Well, we do need to be competitive in this world, because-
That's correct.
Right now, are we competitive with the other cities?
My, my sense is that we are, tend to be higher. And again, I've not done a lot of research or analysis, that's just my gut telling me from what I've looked at. I mean, maybe Tom or Julia can provide a better answer.
You're one of the higher for STCs, for sure.
Yep, we know that on STCs, but in terms of development fees, I really don't know, Mayor.
So, I just have a quick question about what would be interesting, as you're talking to our friends at Wilsonville, to me, is, in a situation like this, where there's sort of an out to the process, does then the process that you were just describing change for us to, could it change for us to, is that's what is happening, they're just pulling it off the table and saying, you don't have to go through that because it's such a minor thing, or it's a challenged location, or I would just be interested in their conversation.
Yeah, and it sounds like, you know, just in a quick review of their process, it's, it's probably similar to what we would do as a type-one process, where it's like, you meet, you know, you meet these criteria, it's fine, and so, there's not a lot of staff time, there's not, so that the fee would, of course, be lower. What I'm curious about is, how do they feel about it? What, what triggered that review? Are there consequences? You know, one of my concerns, just off the top of my head, is, well, what if, you know, that's great for, if you get along with your neighbor, but what about the person that maybe doesn't get along with their neighbor? Or if there's subsequent property owners, have there been issues with that? And so, I want to explore a little bit more with Wilsonville, kind of what their long-term issues have been with that, and if they have any concerns that they want to share.
Yeah, that seems like that would almost be kind of easy, though. If you don't have a letter from your neighbor saying, this is a great idea, then you aren't easy. You aren't an, an easy out. Because, obviously, then you have to have a bigger discussion. But I do, I think it's interesting, I think it's a good conversation to have, and I, from my perspective, I'd just like more information. Really appreciated what Chris said, though, that we just don't want to open ourselves up to that, so we have to be really careful as we go through this process.
So, it sounds like, to me, this is still a two-to-three-month ordeal.
Well, it depends on what you define as the end line. I mean, I think exploring whether or not this Wilsonville thing works, and finding out how many others, that can be a fairly quick process.
Maybe a stopgap measure or something.
In a sense, and if we find out, if the answers to those questions are, yeah, this seems to work, and this solved a problem for very minor things, like you're describing, and here's an easy process, and there's still a process, that might quickly turn into a text amendment. But it still has to go to Planning Commission and go through the process. And we've not had any conversations with the Planning Commission, I don't think you've been at the Planning Commission.
No, but I'm happy to, happy to meet with them.
So, there's still a process, so I would like to expedite the Wilsonville scenario and see if that's something that might work here. Just versus really exploring this fee waiver reduction kind of thing, because that prevent, that presents a lot of other unexpected consequences. In terms of, if you do it for here, then you've got to do it for others potentially. I mean, that, that makes me nervous, and I mean, no offense to your situation.
Well, I understand it makes you nervous, but at the same time, it's in the code for a purpose, and there are situations when it should be, it can be waived, and if they can justify that, attorney, it's easy for, it's easy to just say, this is the law. It's another thing to say, this is the law, and this is the spirit of the law, and in this situation, we made this decision because this, this, and this. And I feel like that's the human side of the law, and that's the human side of being city council, is to say, hey, in this situation, they provided this, this, and this, they have a good point, we're going to reduce this. Now, I understand you're trying to cover their, our, my backside too, right? Because I'm a citizen here, and I have to pay taxes. But I believe there should be some consideration, and I think that's why it's in the code.
Whether or not it makes sense is a policy decision, I'll leave to the council, but as a word of caution on the timing, I'll just save Julia the trouble of pointing this out. If you have to do a text amendment to the code, the first step is thirty-five days' notice to the State Planning Agency, DLCD, so that's your first month plus right there, before you even have the first hearing. So, you're probably looking at something closer to four, four to six months, rather than three to four.
How long has the text amendment been in effect in Wilsonville? I didn't read that.
I don't know.
Okay. If you could find that out as well, as you're talking to them about how it's worked, I'd like to know how long it's worked, how many applicants have gone through, how many times they've utilized it, that kind of thing.
I, I think our fee structure, I read through most of it, and it seemed fairly fair on most of them. It's the STCs, and that's a whole nother conversation, that I think are the driving force for a lot of businesses, not coming in. That's just my opinion on it, unless, after what I've read and saw the differences in jurisdictions. But the fee structure, other than certain little ones, a lot of them are pretty comparable.
Anything else on this issue?
Did you, anybody have anything else? We will get back with you.
Thank you, I appreciate the consideration, and appreciate your time and questions.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, because it, it opens up a lot more that we're able to look at and review and get back with you on. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Let me know about the cat.
City manager comments?
Mayor, did you have any other citizen comments? I just want to make sure, thanks, we covered that. I don't believe we do, but-
Leslie wants to update downtown, you have anything on that?
Okay, let me get to my very minor stuff. Couple things that have gone on, well, one thing that's gone on in our community, and we survived the first few days, Dutch Brothers opened, and it was a very, very successful grand opening, if you saw the press and the news and drove by there, so they're doing very well. Kohl's had a soft opening, I think, starting Sunday. They have their ribbon cutting tomorrow morning, bright and early, and they will be opening, they've been very busy so far. So, it'll be an interesting day tomorrow at Kohl's. Mr. Pesamere will be there, along with the mayor, I don't know if any other councillors will be there.
Seven-thirty, I'll be there.
Seven-thirty, bright and early. My focus and the focus of the department heads is, as I said two weeks ago, is really in budget. My schedule is to release the proposed budget on April first, which means, really, I have to make my decisions and put everything together in the next week, week and a half, to get everything printed and ready to go, so that's what, it's all budget. And I met with Heather Cordy at the school, our school superintendent today, and they're in the same boat, so we commiserated. I think her budget situation is still worse than ours, so. So, any questions on anything from Mayor and Council, for either myself or any of the department directors that are here? Seeing none, thank you.
Council comments?
I have to apologize, I was out of town last week for the senior center steering committee meeting, but I wanted to remind everybody that there is the Antique Appraisal, it's Sherwood's Own Antiques Roadshow, happening this Saturday at, between eleven and two at the Senior Center. Vince and Charlie Harbick will be doing antique appraisals, they're, they're requesting a five-dollar donation, but it's really actually very fun, and they are serving soup, bread, pie, and beverages that are available for purchase. This is a fundraiser for the Sherwood Senior Center, and it is sponsored by the Friends of the Sherwood Senior Center. It's, it's a really fun day and afternoon, and they could actually use some volunteers. I unfortunately am double-booked that day with my two children, I have a volleyball tournament and baseball tryouts, but if any of you have time, I know they need help with setup, possibly Friday evening and afternoon, and it's Saturday morning, as well as cleanup, which I probably will be there for. So, that's happening, and that was really, it's really fun, so if you have time to go in, it's a very fun event. And then, last night, I had the opportunity to attend the Sherwood School District Second Annual All-Band Festival, where all of the bands played, and I counted, and there's somewhere over four hundred students and only two teachers teaching them. Yeah. Mr. Dyer, I believe, is teaching over two hundred and thirty kids between Sherwood Middle School and Laurel Ridge's program, and they're phenomenal, all of them. They were just amazing. We heard the beginning bands combined, and the, and the advanced band, the seventh-grade bands, and then the advanced bands, and then we heard the Sherwood High School Concert Band and the Wind Ensemble, and then they combined, and then all of the bands played the Magnificent Seven at the end. It was awesome. It was really great. But the Wind Ensemble is actually really doing quite well in the competitions, they just recently participated in a regional band event, where they got to be adjudicated and, you know, encouraged and nurtured by a wonderful professor from CU, and they were one of only twenty band, twenty bands in six states to get invited to do that. So, they are quite accomplished, and it was very good. And I'm actually very sad to say, I'm missing the All-District Choir Festival tonight, which is happening. So, I know that the choirs are performing, they finished about a half hour ago, and they were just great. But I just want to congratulate those students and their parents and the faculty, the small number of faculty who teach, an extraordinarily high percentage of our kids. It was marvelous, and I was really proud of Mr. Patrick and Mr. Dyer, and I'm sure today, all of the choir teachers in the district are very happy with their students.
Counselor Butterfield? Anything?
I am good, sir.
One thing that was kind of interesting is that Counselor Clark and I went down to the session at the Capitol for, Capitol Day for the cities, and they've introduced over twenty-five-hundred bills this year, just as a-
And they've introduced over 2,500 bills this year, just as a heads up. And they also...there's a huge movement right now in the PERS and the schools issues. And so there's a lot more to come. They've already presented one PERS issue, and I guess there are going to be more and more coming along. So it's going to be a long year for them.
I wanted to make additional comment. It was a great day at the legislature, and we had an opportunity to meet with both Representative Davis and Senator George. And I wanted to recommend that everyone...I know that you probably won't be able to go through all of the bills that are being introduced. But Senator George is on taxation and revenue, and Representative Davis is on land use and several others that they're really passionate about. But I recommend that if you have some bills that you're passionate about, write to your representative and senator. They were extremely open to our input, taking time. In fact, Senator George pulled out of session at one point. I have spoken with each one of them since then, and they're very open to input from their constituents. They really want to hear from people and are very receptive. So if anyone sees bills talked about in the press and says, wait a minute, you know, I have a comment about that, write to them. They say, particularly Representative Davis said that, you know, a lot of times you'll get emails from maybe a group that you belong to that is in support or against a certain bill. And they'll send you a form letter that they'll say, you know, contact your representative. And, you know, you pull it into the PDF and insert your name. They said they read those, but they are not as effective, because they might get, you know, 10 of those or 100 of them or whatever. And they'll read the first one, and then they'll sort of tag the next. They're not as effective as a, "Dear Representative Davis, this is how I feel." And both of them said, I read every single one. I think about it, and it moves me to petition one way or another on our behalf. So I really recommend that. They're representing us. Thank you.
Any further business? Hearing none, we're adjourned.